February the 19th, 2018, want to welcome everyone. Jeff Pennington, is he out there? I didn't see him. I hope he didn't think we still met at 7:30. The pastor from the Smyrna First Methodist Church, 1275 Church Street. He is not here, so I'm going to ask Corky Welch to give the invocation. Everyone, please rise and then lead us in the place of the flag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if everybody would stand.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, and we ask your blessings, Lord, upon this group of councilmen. We just ask that you bring us the wisdom, Lord, this evening, to give the right answers to the agenda that we have this evening. We just ask that you be with each and every one of us, Lord, as we sit here this evening, and help us, Lord, to understand that the importance of governing of this city and the importance of each and every item that we have on the agenda. We ask that you be with each of us as we travel home this evening. Be with our leaders in the county, the state, federal level, Lord, that the decisions that they make will be worthy of good for you as well, Lord. Lord, as we leave here this evening, we ask that each of us take with us an understanding that this government is a fragile source, Lord, that we need to be prepared individually to support our governing body. We just ask a special prayer, Lord, for the people in Florida last week, that horrendous event, and we just ask that you be with the families of those that lost their lives and those that were injured. Tonight, Lord, we ask this in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Item two is agenda changes. I don't think we have any agenda changes other than a few sponsors of a few of the ordinances that are on here, so we'll move forward with that on the mayor's report. Citizens Police Academy graduating class ceremony and presentation of certificates, Chief Lee. I know that there's 11 folks that went through this class.
No, sir, actually, we had more.
Oh, there's 11 here.
We had some we failed, I guess. This is such a great program, but I want to call Sergeant Defense up here to kind of give an overview of everything they've gone through over the last few months.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Our program is a 12-week-long program that exposes our citizens, our great citizens, to the inner workings of the department. They've been challenged with all types of things like ride-alongs. They have to visit the ME's office, and they get to interact with us on a very personal level, where we get to know them, and they get to know us.
Okay, very good. What we're going to do at this time, we're going to present, excuse me, we're going to present their certificate of completion to each one. Mr. Norton, if you'd like to step down here. If you don't know, he's our public safety chair.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. James Carter.
All right.
Thank you.
You know what? Y'all might as well just stand right there, because I know that we need to get a group photo. So those that got their certificates, yeah, why don't you get your certificate and then line up here.
Tricia Healy.
Yeah, in front of here, yeah.
Tricia Healy. Okay.
She got hers.
Stacy Nicely. Other Atlanta Braves.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Amanda Sweat.
They got the same last name.
Yeah, you must know each other.
Just a little.
Betty, I'm not going to pronounce your last name. I don't want to murder it.
Zaldiva.
Zaldiva.
Thank you.
Nice.
Has that got them? Let's give them a big hand. It's 12 weeks is a long time. Y'all can, y'all need to, yeah, we've got to spread out. Before y'all all sit down, I mean, Chief, there's a couple of things. One, there's a great ratio of women to men. Is there any reason? I mean, there's a lot of, there's two, what, two guys, three guys?
We're very particular.
Tell me, and I don't know if y'all have a spokesperson, and I can tell there was one troublemaker, the blonde that I can tell she's, but is there anybody that would like to speak and just tell us what you got out of it? Jim Carter's the best.
By default, but...
Yes, sir, I certainly will. This class has been absolutely amazing, and I cannot thank the City Council and the Police Department enough for putting this on for the citizens. It's just amazing. What we've learned in 16 classes, I think, we've taken, has just been fantastic. Lewis Defense and Sergeant Defense and Officer Clemens are terrific in teaching this class. They do it with a sense of humor, but also with the seriousness of what we have to learn. All of the people who came and talked to us, every one of them were professional, gave us terrific information. I just can't tell you how important it is, and we need to go out and we need to let the rest of the citizens of Smyrna know that this is something they need to do, as many as possible. It's terrific.
Good deal. Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything? Well, thank y'all very much. Item four, under Land Issues, Zonings and Annexation A 2018-67. It's a public hearing, plat approval with variances for two residential lots, 0.946 acres, landlot 527, 1272 Hayes Drive, JW Hall Custom Building. Is the applicant here? Okay, right. Ms. Jones, will you please give us the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. JW Hall Custom Building is requesting approval to replat and reconfigure two existing residential lots. The subject property is 0.946 acres in size and zoned R15, single-family residential. Community Development reviewed the proposed reconfiguration and replating against the requirements of the R15 zoning district. The Planning and Zoning Board heard the request for the plat approval at the February 12, 2018 meeting and made a recommendation for approval by a vote of seven to zero. Community Development recommends approval. And Ken Sudrith, our Community Development Director, is here to give more information on this item.
This would normally be in Ward Six, I think, and since we have a vacancy in that district, Mr. Stoner resigned effective Friday, I guess it was. Was it Friday?
February 15.
Yeah. Derek Norton will take care of this, and I'm sure he's going to want Mr. Sudrith to give the background. But before we do that, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this variance for these two residential lots? If there is, I need to get you sworn in. If there's not, then that's fine. Do I need to, do we need to swear in the applicant? Scott?
Yes.
Okay. You Mr. Hall, or is that?
Yes.
Okay, you're going to step forward and identify yourself, and Mr. Cochran will swear you in.
Yes.
Okay. You can just have a seat.
Okay.
All right. Now, Ken Sudrith, is that good, Derek?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is a procedural issue. The subdivision regulations require that any time that we create new lots or redefine these lots that require maybe some variances, it needs to go through the normal process, planning commission to council. So that's why we're here, excuse me, tonight. This involves two lots. We will end up with two lots. So we're not creating more lots. We're just rearranging these lots. As you can see on the screen, the two lots sort of are stacked on each other as you look at it from Hayes Drive. What they want to do is to be able to have both lots side by side with access off of Hayes. So it's a reconfiguration of two lots of record into two lots with road frontage, as I said. It will require three variances to do that, of which staff and the planning commission are both supportive of. A reduction in the lot width from 85 to 55 feet, the setback reduction of 10 to 5, and a driveway setback from 5 to 0. This shows you in a table form exactly what I just went over. And the most important thing, in my view, is that these lots are consistent with what we recently approved lots next door on the adjacent property to the west. Here is the site plan showing those two lots being reconfigured to be side by side with the variances that I've already outlined. Again, you've got setbacks of front 35, side of 5, and rear of 30. There's a stream buffer at the extreme back of the property that they will protect. The proposed site development with the adjacent development, the adjacent development is shown here that we approved a couple of months ago, and then these will slide in right next to them so that it's a continuation, basically, of what we've already approved previously. These are the proposed building elevations. Those are samples on the top of real structures. There is a drawing on the bottom to indicate how they would look. This shows the adjacent development, and this will just continue that same look. This is the subject property. You can see there's a house on there. And pictures of the other adjacent properties. Again, staff's recommendation for the replating of these in the R15 zoning district is for approval with a waiver of those three variances that they have requested. And with that in mind, I'll leave you with the proposed site plan showing the two reconfigured lots with direct access now off of Hayes Drive.
Any questions, Mr. Sudrith? Pretty cut and dry. Would applicants step forward? Just tell us who you are.
My name is Josh Hall. I've applied for these few variances, and I'm a builder. And we went through this process last year with the property adjacent, as Ken has already said, and our goal is just to keep that same look going on the street. And we were given the opportunity to purchase this property from Mrs. Birdsong, and she has been approval of this as well. The kind of homes I'm building are kind of more upscale custom homes, and we're going to get started on the four here pretty soon, first on Hayes Drive, and then we'll just kind of keep that same look with this next property as well. So all of them will look like they're kind of part of one same development. So that's going to, our goal is just to not change anything. It's just to kind of keep that same look going next to what's already going in.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hall?
Mr. Fennel?
Mr. Hall, I assume the neighbors are quite pleased with the work you're doing, have done, and are doing to continue to upgrade and improve the neighborhood. And I don't know if anybody's going to have a groundswell of support if everything's going well and they love what you're doing. We've learned that. Only if they're opposed to it will they show up. So it's testament that you're doing something that's pleasing to the neighborhood. Have you found any comments that you need us to know about otherwise?
I don't think so.
I appreciate your investment in the city of Smyrna and your ongoing improvement of the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
He was referring to any skeletons in your closet, I guess.
Oh. Not yet.
Good deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, I'm going to make a motion to approve item 4A 2018-67, plat approval with variances for two residential lots, 0.946 acres, landlot 527, 1272 Hayes Drive, JW Hall Custom Building.
Second. Motion second to approve this variance request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six to zero. Thank you very much. You did good. Item 4B, under Land Issues, Zonings and Annexation 2018-18. It's a public hearing. It's our request Z 18002, rezoning from R15 to LC for the use of a building as an office, 0.25 acres, landlot 340 and 381, 596 Concord Road. William and Kathy Rhodes, are the applicants here? Okay. For the background, Ms. Jones.
Yes, William and Catherine Rhodes are proposing to rezone the property on Concord Road from R15 to LC as an office building. The proposed business will have three employees on site. The subject property is currently vacant, and it is one of the last single-family residents remaining on this portion of Concord Road. The rezoning request was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the January 8, 2018 meeting and was recommended for approval by a vote of six to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the proposed rezoning from R15 to LC with conditions.
This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this rezoning request? Okay, I'm going to ask that the two, that the applicants, William and Kathy Rhodes, come forward and let us swear in. Carver, you representing them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Y'all come on down. I didn't realize that.
We're ready when you are.
If y'all will just have a seat, then we're going to turn. This is in Marilyn Blackburn's district. I'm sure she's going to ask that Ken Sudrith give the background, I would think. Marilyn?
Mr. Sudrith, would you please come forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is not a complex rezoning. I think Ms. Jones has outlined what we have in front of us tonight. It is a single parcel of land. It is an existing single-family residence. It has a residential zoning classification, one of the few residential lots on that side of the street that actually has retained that. They are asking for it to be changed from R15 to LC, which is local commercial, for the purposes of putting in an office. They will retain the structure, but they'll reduce the parking on that. But there is not a new structure that we are dealing with tonight. We don't have to change anything on our future development maps because it was already anticipated to go commercial on this. This is the proposed site plan. They will have parking out front. The requirements and the size of the structure are compatible so that the spaces that they have meet our requirements. They will be converting this 1,000-square-foot home into office space. There's four parking spaces, as I've referenced. There's a 10-foot landscape buffer to the rear because we're changing this to a commercial classification. These are pictures of the subject property. It's right next door to the Wellstar facility that currently exists on Concord Road. Other photos of adjacent properties. Staff's recommendation on this is for approval with the following conditions: that the applicant must provide the four parking spaces in substantial compliance with the site plan and tree plan that has been submitted. Stormwater detention shall be placed and screened appropriately. There shall be no bells, whistles, or outdoor loudspeakers permitted on this site. Any proposed dumpsters shall be surrounded by three-sided brick enclosure. And the applicant shall install two 4-inch caliber overstory trees up along the Concord Road street frontage. With that, I will leave you with the proposed site plan.
Any questions? Okay. Mr. Sams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff, and Bally, and have the pleasure tonight of representing Mr. William Rhodes and Ms. Catherine Rhodes, and they're seated right here on the same row that I am. As Mr. Sudrith said, this isn't a complex zoning, but it's a very important zoning, particularly with respect to their business and the ongoing nature of it. And I'll explain a little bit about that in a minute. And of course, they know more about their business than anyone does, so they can respond to any questions that you have, too. Planning Commission, or Planning Zoning Board, rather, did recommend approval of this unanimously. There were six members that night, and there was no opposition, just as tonight. But we always come prepared to respond to questions or address concerns and stand ready to do that with y'all as well. Ken did a good job of always setting this up. This is R15. It is directly, if you're looking at this property facing it on Concord Road, it is directly to the left, excuse me, right, or left, left, of the Wellstar facility, which I was instrumental in getting zoned, I don't know, 10 or so years ago. But it's a very nice-looking structure. And what the Rhodes wanted to do was to ensure that what they did was complementary to what's already been started along this section of Concord Road. And I know the mayor knows this, and many of you do, too. When Concord Road started being developed back about 50 years ago, it was all residential properties. All the frontage was residential. The streets behind it were residential. And what we've seen is a trend in the area is retrofitting and rehabbing existing residents there that it can accommodate office utilization. But for those that can't, for instance, the Wellstar facility is approximately 10,000 square feet. It needed to expand, and so they demolished what was on that property. But the trend in the area is commercially oriented. We meet the staff's requirements. We meet your policy and intent is embodied in your future land use map. We have, I say, we, Terry, has handed out to you, handout. And what it shows are architectural plans and elevations showing how they're going to retrofit, rehab this building, make it ADA accessible, of course. They've gone to a lot of expense in order to make sure that they've done it and done it right. By the time they got to me, they'd already done the things that I typically would do to get someone in position correctly. So they're very methodical, very businesslike, very business-oriented folks. And we're going to bring it up to the aesthetics of the city as well. It will be a welcome and consistent addition to Concord Road. This house is actually owned by the estates of Charles and Peggy Shepherd, and it's been on the market for a while. The staff, as I mentioned, has recommended approval. This is straightforward, but it's somehow atypical in a way. I didn't submit a stipulation letter on this. Didn't need to. It is that straightforward. Your staff has standard and special conditions, and we're agreeable to all the conditions Mr. Sudrith mentioned. A few things that you may not have before you are architectural renderings and elevations. They were submitted concurrently with the application. They're distributed among you. They were utilized as a condition of zoning, this property for office purposes only. LC has some other permitted uses, but they're agreeing to limit it to that use only. These will be 40-hour work weeks, nine-to-five typically. Of course, some people like to work on weekends, but they won't be receiving any customers. And really, customer is not the right word. Client is the right word. They represent and manage nonprofit-type groups. That is what they do. So we agree to all standards, tips that staff has, and we think this is beneficial to the city. It most definitely is consistent with your current future land use map and your comprehensive land use plan. For all those reasons, we do ask that you follow your planning and zoning board's recommendation for approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions to Mr. Sams?
Thanks, sir.
Anything else? Anything the applicants would like to say? Y'all want to leave it alone? I suggest us leave it alone. Marilyn?
Yes, okay. Well, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning request Z 18002, rezoning from R15 to LC for the use of the building as an office on 0.25 acres, landlots 340 and 381, at 596 Concord Road.
Second. A motion second to approve this zoning request, rezoning request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved six to zero. Thank y'all very much. Item 4C, 2017-434. A public hearing only, zoning request Z 17-023, rezoning from R15 and R20 to RAD conditional for the development of 15 single-family residences at a density of 3.57 units per acre, 4.2 acres, landlot 340, 3328, and 3366, old Concord Road. Epic Homes LLC is the applicant here. Okay, thank you. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Epic Homes LLC is requesting a rezoning from R15 and R20 Cobb County to RAD conditional Smyrna for the development of 15 new single-family homes at a density of 3.57 units per acre. Community Development has reviewed the proposed redevelopment against the zoning standards of the recent adjacent rezonings and found the proposed development to be compatible with the infield development in the immediate area. Planning and zoning approved the rezoning on January 8, 2018 by a vote of six to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning with conditions. And Mr. Sudrith will also give a background on this one as well.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make public comment concerning this issue? For those that would like to make public comment, would you please step forward and be sworn in? For those that just, maybe you think, maybe you don't want them... I want to get everybody sworn in all at one time. Got this one person. sworn in all at one time, at this one person. Okay. If you'll have a seat. This is in Ms. Blackburn's district. Ms. Blackburn?
I'd like to ask, can Sudworth please come forward and give us information on this?
Thank you again. This is a combined rezoning and annexation. It's a little bit unique in the annexation in that not all of the property is coming into the city, and I will show you that as we go through. Here's the zoning map. The subject parcel is outlined, so it is a sort of a long, narrow lot that has a little bit of frontage on Concord Road, but a lot of frontage on Old Concord Road. There are two existing single-family homes on the site. The proposal was to put 15 new single-family homes. The zoning in the county is R-15 and R-20, and they are asking for an RAD conditional in the city. So again, just to remind you all, the way, as well as the audience, the way the agenda is, it's a three-step process. We have the public hearing in this step, which is what this presentation is about. Then we do the annexation, and then there will be the final vote on the rezoning aspect once it's in the city. Future development map, again, because it's in the county, we don't have anything in the city, but we would bring it in as moderate density. This density classification is compatible with Concord Lake subdivision, which is in the city, that's directly across the street. This is the site plan of the proposed development outlined there, the 15 lots. The minimum setbacks would be a front setback of 25 feet. The exterior side, meaning the very ends, would be 25 feet. And then the interior, meaning between the houses, would be 25 feet for each house, so that there would be a 10-foot separation, and then 25 feet in the rear. They originally had submitted, and met the requirement to have sidewalks all the way around. They have, through discussions, agreed to increase curb and gutter and their sidewalk aspect from 5 feet to 7 feet, so that would be a 2-foot strip, a 7-foot wide sidewalk. There would still be a 5-foot sidewalk maintained on Charlotte Circle. Charlotte Circle will have the entrance to these homes, which would be a driveway that runs the rear of these houses, because they all face Old Concord Road. There's also a new right turn that is being proposed to help alleviate some of the stacking that is there, but also because of what they are introducing to the site, to this area. I had mentioned the 20-foot shared driveway in the rear. These are rear-loaded homes. There's also a 35-foot access, as well as utility easement, that runs in that same general area. The stormwater detention is shown here. It is off of Charlotte Circle. There are nine additional parking spaces. Remember that each house will have a garage, as well as two parking spaces behind them. And then here's an additional nine parking spaces being provided for the residents. And then there is open space requirement directly behind the proposed homes, as well as up at the intersection of Concord and Old Concord. So the requested variances are reduction in lot size from 15,000 to a little over 7,300 square feet, the lot width reduction of 100 to 50 feet, front setback from 35 to 25. The interior setbacks, which I've already mentioned, go from 10 to 5, and the rear setback from 30 to 25. Let me get back, I want to back up one slide to the open space slide. On the area that is cross-hatched at the intersection of Concord and Old Concord Road, that area is part of the subdivision, but will not come into the city. That, because of the other corner, which would be the northeast corner of that intersection, is in the county. So to bring this little over 9,000-square-foot area into the city would create an island, and therefore, we could not do that. So this section of the subdivision is being left to maintain continuity with the county. The property that you see outlined in this proposed site plan is in the county. So that would maintain the continuity there and would not create an island. These are the proposed home elevations. Pictures of the subject property and adjacent properties. Staff recommendation, as well as Planning Commission recommendation, is for approval for the 15 single-family homes, and to zone it RAD conditional. This has a density of 3.57 units per acre, which I had referenced earlier, is very similar and compatible with what is already developed within the city portion of Old Concord Road. It's also, would be compatible for the land use plan that exists in the city portions already. Again, the standard requirements dealing with the composition of the home and the protective covenants, the open space requirements, which I outlined, have been met. Stormwater management, which we had shown you, they will be required to have underground utilities, traffic improvements of their responsibility, including the right-turn lane that was referenced. There's no burring of debris on site. They do have to provide what the ordinance would require for streetlights, as well as meet the requirements for the tree ordinance. The landscape plans also have to meet ordinance requirements. Now, under the special conditions, and again, special conditions for those in the audience are those that apply specifically to this development. I've already referenced the setbacks and the lot size and the lot width. The minimum floor area cannot go below 1,800 square feet, although what they are showing us is well above that minimum. Maximum allowable lot coverage shall be limited to 45 percent. Developers responsible for installation of water and sewer lines. The driveway, you see this every time, that they have to maintain 22-foot minimum. That gives us that two-car parking behind the garage on their own property. We've talked about the 5 feet actually being changed to 7 feet. So here, in this recommendation, we did not change that from 5 feet. That really should say 7 feet now, because we've gotten an updated site plan in that I referenced earlier. So number 20 should say the developer shall install a 7-foot sidewalk with a 2-foot grass strip. The developer shall install curb and gutter along Old Concord Road, as well as Charlotte Circle. We've talked about the right-turn lane. We've talked about the private share drive. We've talked about landscape buffers and stormwater management, the tree ordinance. Number 27 talks about basically restricting the property to what they have submitted to us in their site plan, that it has to be in substantial compliance when they actually come apply for their building permit. And the same goes for their elevations, that they have to be in substantial compliance with that. Their attorney representing this is Mr. Garvis Sams. He did submit additional stipulations, so we've added that as condition 29, that in addition to what staff has recommended, other stipulations are included in his letter. They become part of this recommendation, as well as if there's any substantial architectural differentiation between the proposed homes, there shall be that, so that no two homes shall have the same elevation. So there has to be a variety of homes in look as running along Old Concord Road. With that, I'll leave you with the proposed site plan.
Any questions, Mr. Sudworth? Okay.
I have a question. What are your plans for?
Hold on. Wait till it's your turn to speak, okay? Mr., the applicant. Mr. Sams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams of the Law Firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff, and Bally, and I'm here tonight representing Epic Homes. And we appeared before the Planning and Zoning Board. There were two ladies that were there, taking the position of opposition. It's turned out they were interested in sidewalk issues and things of that nature. So they, when they got up, they said they weren't really opposed to it. And the Planning and Zoning Board ended up recommending unanimously approval. Again, one Planning and Zoning Board member was not with us that evening. My client, Mr. Joey Hips of Epic Homes, was present at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and he sends his apologies, like many fathers and mothers, they are on a family vacation presence day, and they tied it into the weekend. So he sends his regards from Colorado.
Tough duty, I think.
Yeah, no, it's just not fair. What I'm going to do is present this in one fashion, so, and of course, I know y'all have to vote on it separately, but present it in unison for the application for annexation and for rezoning, and I guess part of that's a future land use map change as well. The, Ken, of course, has done a good job, again, presenting this. This is a 4.2-acre tract of land. It's across the road, Old Concord Road, from subdivision Concord Lake Estates, which I zoned about 12 years ago. And it really kind of set the tone, and back then, that was a real aggressive but strategic expansion of your city boundaries to get the city to where it is, to put the city in a position so that this property, this is before you tonight, the 4.2 acres at the southwest corner, are within the unincorporated boundaries of Cobb County right now, but we have a path of contiguity. And I think that ties into what Mr. Sudworth was saying in terms of making certain that we didn't create an unincorporated island with the 9,000-some-odd-square-foot on the pin corner. Since there's an intergovernmental agreement between you guys in Cobb County, they weigh in on every annexation that you have, whether it's 100 percent, 60 percent. The staff has received a letter of no objection from Cobb County, but we still interfaced with their staff, and their staff with your staff, and your staff with me, and my staff, oh, never mind. And the developer, of course, himself, has met individually with the various county staff members. This is an application that was held two times, once in November and then in December. And the reason for that was a mutual decision reached by Mr. Sudworth and his staff and us to make sure that we had the optimal set of circumstances to present it to staff so that it felt comfortable with what we were proposing, but also to ensure that we were in a position to have addressed your questions as well. So it was tabled twice. We were heard by the Planning and Zoning Board in January. Your staff has recommended approval, and what we're asking for is a rezoning to the, from Cobb County R-20 to your RAD conditional for the purposes of the development of 15 custom, quality-built, single-family detached residential homes, ranging, or ranging, rather, in price points from the $400, $410,000 to $460,000. Three to four bedrooms, two and a half to three baths. And of course, you can expect that price point to go up with upgrades that may be made by individual purchasers. We've talked to numerous area residents and business owners. As I mentioned, there were two ladies that were present at the hearing who were interested, one of whom had an issue of sidewalk, I think, or I gleaned from what she said, she was a bicyclist and, or cyclist, and liked to utilize the city system. And y'all have a master plan. It doesn't include Old Concord Road yet, but I understand, I know you've got a master plan for what you want to see throughout the city in terms of pedestrian and cycling connectivity. And in order to address that, and then to follow up the meeting I had with Ms. Blackburn and Ms. Wilkinson here at Community Development Division, there are some changes in the stipulation letter, one which increases the width of the sidewalk from 5 feet to 7 feet. I'd love to be able to do it 10 feet, as would my developer, but the topographical issues, without building just incredibly large wall, 7 was what we could do. And we interfaced with your staff on that, so that they would understand that. Another thing that was suggested was that the 9,000-square-foot pin corner that's being left in the county for contiguity and island annexation purposes. It was a question about what was going to be done with that. That will be a passive recreational area. My client intends for it to be a dog park, so I'm not sure if that's passive or not. I guess it's, you know, whether the animals are well-trained or not. But in any event, it is part of the open space. It is part of the common space that will be maintained by the mandatory HOA. Right before the Planning and Zoning Board hearing, or the first one that was tabled, we established a dialogue with Concord Lake Estates HOA, and on the very day of the night, we had the Planning and Zoning Board meeting. There was an email sent from the HOA to Joel Powell, who is your chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, and I am authorized to say that the subdivision directly across the street is in favor and supports this, even with the change, the couple of changes we've made since our meeting with Ms. Blackburn and Ms. Wilkinson as well. The homes here are just astounding in terms of the architectural style and composition. We've got them depicted in, of course, the elevations we've handed out, those we filed along with the application itself. We are at a density of 3.57. If you will look at a matrix that is in your zoning analysis, your staff recommendations, Mr. Martin and Mr. Sudworth have taken a matrix of several different RAD developments that are in this general vicinity. We have the lowest unit per acre at 3.57, with those densities ranging up to 6.12 units per acre. We have the largest minimum lot size, we're the largest minimum average lot size. And then we have the widest of the lot. So in some jurisdictions, when you see a reduction in the district requirements from 15,000 down to 7,300 and some change, that might give you pause for alarm, but it's not only consistent with it, it exceeds really the tenor of the type of development that you have approved as a mayor and city councilor. Of course, all these homes will be for sale. There'll be mandatory HOA, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, third-party management company to handle the day-to-day operations of this HOA until such time as Mr. Hips and Epic Homes turns it over to them. We have submitted a revised stipulation letter, primarily to address the sidewalk issue and the pin corner issues. I can go through all that with, in my news, but I don't think you need for me to do that. I will say that concurrently with the first revised stipulation letter, we filed a full hydrology report. It's been vetted by Eric Randall and your staff. So from a hydrological perspective, we're in good shape. Water and sewer, county-related, so we'll follow the county's recommendation as to how best to handle the water and the sewer. And we've already made contact with Tim Davidson and the water system with respect to those issues. There's five concurrent variances. Staff is a bull on variances. They are, unless we prove a hardship, and we prove that the, a literal interpretation of the ordinance works a hardship by way of topography, or configuration, or some use that's, or some reason that's not economic, you know, not driven by us wanting more lots. This originally started out at 16 lots. We're down to 15. And we think that it is representative of, aggressive's not the right word, but the very smart growth position that the county, the city, and the county in conjunction, because interdepartmental governmental agreement is consistent, we think, with what Mr. Mayor... because interdepartmental governmental agreement is consistent, we think, with what Mr. Mayor and Ms. Blackburn, what y'all have been doing in the past. So we do respectfully request you follow Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation for approval subject to what Mr. Sudrich has put forth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions of Mr. Sambs? The only thing that I'd like to ask is, this is the Marshall property and the Theodosian property? Do you know?
I wasn't involved in the contract negotiation, Mr. Mayor. I do know the property owner of the property opposite the pin corner. We wanted to negotiate with her to see if we could buy that property, number one. And since we couldn't, to create the path of contiguity.
I was just interested if there was anyone here from the Theodosian family that... There's not many of us left.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions of Mr. Sambs? You got a question?
I just want to thank you for meeting with Councilman Blackburn and myself and working with us on the sidewalk. I think that is something important to the people that live in that corridor.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you. And one thing I wanted to ask, or just bring to your attention, because I had a conversation with Eric Randall. And on the stormwater management report, it actually says on the, so, let's see. I guess it's the first page. It says, that last sentence in that first paragraph executive summary, it says, it refers to the city of Holly Springs post-development storm management ordinance. And he and I thought that should say Smyrna, and so I just wanted to...
He's not geographically challenged. It's a typographical error, so I apologize for that.
All right. Well, thank you.
I'll have to say I didn't pick that up, so keen eye there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the other question I have is, the corner, I understand that corner is the proposed dog park area. And how will, I was looking at the map when Mr. Sudrich was showing us. And how will the residents access that area?
There's a common, I mean interruption, common driveway in the back. So there'll be pedestrian connectivity by way of those driveways.
Okay.
And all these are rear-loaded. So they're oriented toward Old Concord. But by the same token, they have that rear point of ingress and egress to get to their homes.
Okay.
We should be able to go straight down into that. And then also by way, without being on concrete, by way of the open space as well, from the larger open space to the 9,000 square foot open space.
Okay. And I know in our meeting, you had actually mentioned this. I wanted to ask if your client might be acceptable. But you had mentioned the possibility of a bench or two in that area? And did you have a talk with him by any chance?
I did. Oh, yeah. I've had several back and forths. In fact, the day that we met Ms. Wilkinson, I did. And I'm trying to find an email that I sent to Ms. Blackburn, and I don't see it right here. We talked with, it's problematic. Number one, the property, that little 9,000 square foot piece is in Cobb County. It will remain in Cobb County. The HOA is going to own it, maintain it, and control it. It's going to be a dog park, even though a passive park, it more than likely will be fenced on that. So in talking with the attorney for the third-party management company, and talking with two of my partners, and then circling back to staff, we determined that that simply wouldn't be an insurable set of circumstances that the HOA would be able to take on. So we looked at it through three attorneys, two of which don't count because I'm one of my partners. But the third-party management attorney, he knows his stuff and knows what's insurable over is an exception, what's not.
Okay.
So that was the reason for that.
I guess maybe I misunderstood you, because I thought at one time you were talking about the benches on the actual sidewalk or something, but maybe I was mistaken.
You know, there'll still probably be benches in there, but they just won't be accessible to the members of, so it won't be called a public park.
It'll be in the, on that park. Okay. Thank you.
And I made that overcomplicated. I didn't mean to. But there are good legal reasons why we can't.
Yes, just we've spent way too much time on this bench, but we'll move on.
Well, maybe two benches.
Good luck with that. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Sambs? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We had one person that was sworn in. If you'll step forward and tell us who you are and where you live at, and make any comments that you'd like to. And you can have your questions answered, whatever it was that you would like to ask.
My name is Kay Clapper. I live at 3927 Plumcrest Road. I'm a retired attorney and have lived in Smyrna for 35 years. I watched the destruction and clearcutting of 100-year-old trees on four acres of property at the end of my street, Plumcrest Road, after this council approved a development in our 50-year-old neighborhood to go from R-20 to RAD zoning. The developer has systematically not followed guidelines that were given to him without recourse or accountability. Variances were approved by this council that allowed clearcutting and placing 15 homes on four acres instead of the original nine or 10 that would be allowed for R-20. Since the trees were cut down, our community has been inundated with an infestation of rats, coyotes, and wildlife that have no place else to go. The entrance to the property is a steep hill that is already flooded North Cooper Lake with only three days of light rain. There is no 10-foot buffer of old-growth trees circling the property that was originally in the original zoning plan. And the retention pond is an enormous potential disaster waiting to happen. They did put up a fence, but anyone can climb over it. At the end of the development is a huge building, and I don't know, I think it's a clubhouse. I don't know what it is. But it doesn't fit in with anything in the neighborhood. Even though our city was originally blessed with abundant green space, in the past 10 years, development promoted by this council has allowed developers to change our 15 and R-20 zoning to RAD zoning at an alarming rate. This change has resulted in clearcutting of each proposed development, destruction of trees and green space, and homes that are placed less than 10 feet apart. I understand your reasoning. You think that increasing tax dollars now is more important than saving trees. However, if you simply take a look at Houston, you can predict long-term problems that will occur when all our trees are cut down. Even their own city planners now admit that they should have included green space in each one of their new developments. The nine zoning law criteria and the Smyrna tree ordinance, which is already on the books, is outdated and needed of revision. Once all the trees are cut down, there is nothing to stop soil erosion and flooding. RAD homes less than 10 feet apart contribute to water runoff, soil erosion, air pollution, increasing electric bills because it's only cement, no trees, serious congestion, which leads to traffic problems, school overcrowding, increased budget demands by police, fire, and water management boards. We also have to remember that saving trees preserves ecosystems and habitats for wildlife. The Atlanta Audubon Society predicts a half of the native birds in Georgia are already endangered or threatened due to habitat destruction. If this council continues its unrestricted approval of RAD development and zoning, Smyrna will soon be devoid of all trees and plant life altogether. Changing R-20 to RAD simply to gain more money per acre is not sanctioned by law, according to a decision by the Georgia Supreme Court. And I quote, "It is well-established that a significant detriment to a landowner is not shown by the fact that the property would be more valuable if rezoned, or by the fact that it would be more difficult to develop the property as zoned than if rezoned." In other words, the fact that developers can make more money on a property if the property is rezoned is not a legal reason under law in Georgia to change R-20 to RAD. I would like this city council to stop thinking only in terms of immediate tax dollars and consider the long-term effects of having no trees left in our city. On this particular property on the corner of Old Concord and Concord Road, which by the way, is a two-lane street that people use as the cut-through to Wendy Hill. It's very busy already. There are about 500-plus-year-old oak trees. And the rest of the property is covered in old native trees. Once you, once you cut down 100, I'm almost finished. Once you cut down a 100-year-old tree, you don't ever get it back by replacing it with a two-inch sampling. Meteorologists have predicted the potential of more Category 4 and 5 hurricanes and more extremes in weather, including floods and droughts. Without trees, there is nothing to stop the devastation to our city that happened in Houston. I implore this council to enforce the rules already on the books, or better yet, to consider updating the nine criteria to reflect the potential effects of new weather patterns that will affect future flooding and congestion issues in our city. On this particular property, the developer can still make money by leaving the zoning as is. It would just require that he include leaving more trees and green space in the plan. I am opposed to changing R-20 to RAD. Thank you.
Did you get your, did you get your question answered?
I wanted to know what plan he has to save trees.
Okay.
I didn't hear a word, I didn't hear a thing about trees. He's going to clearcut the whole four acres, is what I understood. So when that happens, trust me, you've got problems. And he can put 10 houses on there and still make money. He doesn't need to put 15 houses. We have that at the end of my street, and it's a mess. It's awful. So...
I just wanted to make sure whatever the question was that you had that I sort of cut you off on was answered. So Ken, I know, you want to make any comment about the tree bank or the tree-cut area? While he's on his way up here, and I've said this before, but our requirements that we put on new development, which make the utilities go underground, pretty much requires them to pretty much clearcut a lot of trees. And you're right, there's some trees out there that are 100 years old. I don't know what kind of shape they're in. Trees are like humans. They don't live forever. It's a beautiful piece of property. I've gone by it for almost 70 years. Will you address the issue about the trees? Because I thought during your presentation that you'd said something about.
Yeah, they have to meet the tree ordinance requirement, which does allow trees to be removed, but they do have to be replaced. But there are certain penalties and credits. If you have a tree that's classified as a specimen tree and you keep that, you get additional credit for the minimum number of trees that you have to put in in terms of the width of the trees. If you take them down, then there is a reverse of that. Then you have to pay either into a tree bank for future tree planting by the city so that there's sort of a zero-sum game with that, or you replant according to what the minimum inch requirements are. Every, the ordinance requires that there has to be at least 100 inches per acre on that. And you either do that by planting on the site, or you pay into the tree bank with that. With regard to the tree ordinance, a lot of people like to point out that we do allow that. But I will say this, that tree ordinance is only 10 years old and is still used by several state foresters representing as a model ordinance. When we adopted that ordinance in this city, it was classified by the state as a model ordinance. And they still use it to this day with some of the techniques that we have. And, you know, we do inch for inch on that.
Any other questions of Ken?
I have one. Thanks. Thank you, Ken. I know that there was a, what I understand, like a preliminary stormwater report, and that there would be, there's going to be more, like, down, like, analysis that will have to be done in terms of the stormwater.
Yes. Yeah. As part of the zoning, they have to do a preliminary so that basically we know that indeed it is possible. But the detail come in the report that they have to submit, which is indeed reviewed by Eric Randall, our city engineer, prior to any permits being issued at that point.
Okay. And so if, just, this is a question, in case the, this, once they do that, that other analysis, if it, you know, doesn't work for this developer, does this convert back to the original zoning, or does it?
No, they'll have, they will have to take, if Eric discovers something that he disagrees with, they will have to bring, they will have to do what is necessary to bring in compliance with the ordinances that he manages and oversees dealing with the stormwater. There isn't, you know, this doesn't give any waivers to any of that. They still got to go through that. And if they can't meet it, then with what they propose, they're going to have to make adjustments.
And then, and then my next question is, because I know that it looks like on that property where the stormwater detention pond will be is sort of up on a hill. And can you tell us, well, you might not know yet, but in terms of the screening or the fencing? Because I think we've seen some other developments that have put up, you know, the wood fence that looks really, you know, like tall when it's up on a hill. So I just wondered if, and I've also seen some that have like a black chain-link fence or something like that, at which, you know, you can see more of the landscaping in that way. So I was just wondering what...
I don't have an answer for you at this point. We will pick that up. In particular, Eric does review that when it comes in for actual building permits.
Okay. The way this works is that since this is an annexation, I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing for the rezoning. If there's no other questions, then I'll close the public hearing on that. Item D is the approval of ordinance 2017-13, annexation request, 100% of owners requesting annexation, landlot 340, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of 4.2 acre tract at 3328 and 3366 Old Concord Road, Smyrna, Georgia. We will be a part of Ward 3. Annexation will be effective March 1st, 2018. Ms. Blackburn?
At this time, I would like to make a motion for approval of ordinance number 2017-13 for annexation request, 100% of owners requesting annexation, landlot 340, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of 4.2 acre tract, 3328 and 3366 Old Concord Road, Smyrna, Georgia, which is part of my ward.
Second.
A motion second to approve this annexation and become a part of Ward 3, effective March 1st, 2018. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 6-0. Item E is the final vote, 2018-87, zoning request Z17-023, rezoning from R-15 and R-20 to RAD conditional for the development of 15 single-family residences at a density of 3.57 unit per acre, 4.2 acres, landlot 340, 3328 and 3366 Old Concord Road, Epic Homes LLC. Ms. Blackburn?
At this time, if we don't have any other questions? Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve zoning request Z17-023, rezoning from R-15 and R-20 to RAD conditional for the development of 15 single-family residences at a density of 3.57 units per acre, 4.2 acres, landlot 340, at 3328 and 3366 Old Concord Road, Epic Homes LLC.
Second.
Motion second to approve this rezoning request. Of course, that includes all the stipulations that Ken had, so any discussion?
Yes, all of the stipulations.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved 5 to 1. Ms. Wilkinson votes in the negative. Item 5 is previous licenses. We have... We have none. Item six is formal business, A 2018-92, approval for the Smyrna Police Department to enter into a contract with 10-8 Forensic Services, Inc., located somewhere in Douglasville, I assume that's Georgia, and have the mayor sign and execute all related documents. Um, Ms. Jones, the background, please.
10-8 Forensic Services will provide an on-call service for blood and urine evidence draws from suspects driving while under the influence of alcohol and/or drugs. The service has become too costly and difficult to obtain from local hospitals, with most wanting a court-issued search warrant. Our contracted price is based on the specific services provided. Uh, our Chief of Police and his staff does recommend approval.
This is under Mr. Derek Norton, uh, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee. Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is, as, as, as Ms. Sadler Jones says, has been recommended by the chief, who knows how to run his department, and if there's no further questions of the council, uh, I'm gonna recommend that we approve item 6A, 2018-92, approval of the Smyrna Police Department to enter into a contract with 10-8 Forensic Services, Inc., located in Douglasville, and have the mayor sign and execute all related documents.
Motion second to approve this, uh, contract. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve six zero. Item 6B under formal business, approval for the City of Smyrna to continue as subsipient of the Cobb County Community Development Block Grant CDBG program to receive the grant amount of $195,043.30 authorized the mayor to sign and execute the 2018 subsipient agreement documents. Um, Ms. Jones, you want to tell us what that is?
Sure. Every year, the City of Smyrna signs a sub-recipient agreement with Cobb County Community Development Block Grant Department. Uh, this agreement authorizes Cobb County to continue the administration of funds and reporting to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on behalf of the City of Smyrna. The city's preliminary funding amount for program year 2018 is $195,043.40. This amount is subject to change or increase should HUD release more funds to Cobb County. CDB funds have been used to fund projects in our Parks and Recreation Department, our Public Works Department, and to fund our staff in our city's Code Enforcement Division. Staff recommends approval of the agreement with Cobb County CDBG.
I'll ask Mr. Ron Fennell, who chairs the Finance Administration Committee. Mr. Fennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm proud to recommend approval of this ordinance, which is the annual, uh, pass-through dollar amount, uh, just under $200,000 this year, uh, for, uh, 2018-86, approval of the City of Smyrna to continue as the sub-recipient for the Cobb County Community Block Grant Program to receive the grant amount of $195,043.30, and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute a sub-recipient agreement for 2018's documents.
Second. A motion second to approve this, uh, agreement. You get a couple hundred thousand dollars that we can use. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve six zero. Item C, Resolution 2018-01, approval to adopt a resolution, 2018-01, designating the Market Village as a restaurant district. Um, Ms. Jones, the background, please.
This resolution will allow alcoholic beverages to be carried in the city's restaurant district designated as Market Village in downtown Smyrna. The Market Village area is defined as the area of West Spring Street that extends from King Street Southeast and Atlanta Road Southeast, and demarcated by the presence of the brick roadway, including the sidewalks, green space, and the fountain area. Market Village represents one of our city centers of commerce, and restaurant patrons frequently utilize this area already. Staff does recommend approval.
This is in, although the agenda says Norton, this is actually in Ms. Blackburn's district. I'll ask her to address that issue. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited that we are going to have what we call our very own restaurant district right here in Smyrna. Um, it's very exciting, and of course, we have a lot of the residents who do visit the restaurants that are in our center, and people that come from out of town as well. So, I am going to, um, vote to approve, the approval to adopt resolution 2018-01, designating the Market Village as a restaurant district.
A motion second to approve this designation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve six zero. Item 6D under formal business, ordinance 2018-04, approval of ordinance 2018-04, amending the Smyrna, City of Smyrna Code of Ordinance to regulate the carrying in and out of alcoholic beverages within the authorized restaurant district, to define the process for the designation of restaurant district, and to repeal any conflicting provisions. Um, Ms. Jones, the background.
This amendment to Chapter Six, Section 6-46 would allow individuals to carry out and consume an alcoholic beverage from a business within our downtown area, provided that the individual remain within the designated restaurant district. The beverage has to be purchased from a business residing within the restaurant district, and the alcoholic beverage has to be consumed from a paper or plastic cup, limited to 16 ounces in size. There are other municipalities in the metro Atlanta area that have similar changes to their code of ordinances to allow carryout of alcoholic beverages within authorized areas. Therefore, staff does recommend approval.
Uh, Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to vote the approval of ordinance 2018-04, amending the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances to regulate the carry-in out of alcoholic beverages within authorized restaurant districts, to define the process for the designation of a restaurant district, and to repeal any conflicting provisions.
A motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve six zero. Item M is ordinance 2018-06, approval of ordinance 2018-06, amending the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 70, Parks and Recreation, Article One, in general, Section 70-1 and 70-2 pertaining to the use of park areas and recreational facilities. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
A review of existing city ordinances pertaining to the public use of parks, areas, and recreation facilities was completed by our Parks and Recreation Director. The proposed changes are being recommended by the director. Some of the changes are related to closing hours of the parks, conduct in the parks, vehicles and parking, as well as other pertinent changes. It is the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Director that the city adopt the proposed ordinances pertaining to the use, the public use of park areas and recreation facilities.
Uh, this is under Ms. Susan Wilkinson, who chairs the Parks and Recreation Committee. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, in our discussion earlier this evening, um, just, uh, there was some questions about some of the, um, the details of the, of this ordinance, and for the most part, I think we're in agreement with it, but, um, I want to move tonight to table it, so that that'll give us a chance to look at, um, a couple of those things that are in there.
Got a motion to table, have, here a second. Second, Ms. Blackburn. All right. Uh, motion second to table, all those in favor of the motion? That's two yea and four nay, so that, uh, we need to move forward with this. Do we hear a motion that we approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Okay. Motion second to approve this ordinance. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved four to two, with Ms. Blackburn and Ms. Wilkinson voting, uh, in the negative. Uh, item seven is commercial building permits. We don't have any. Eight is the consent agenda. Um, Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approval of the February 5th, 2018, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the February 1st, 2018, pre-council meeting minutes. Approval C, pardon me, item C, approval of the February 5th, 2018, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval to purchase five equipped Ford Explorers, one admin Ford Explorer, and re, to refurbish, the refurbishment of two equipped Ford Crown Victorias for the police department as part of the FY18 Vehicle Replacement Fund at a total cost of $259,742.04. This vehicle purchase will be through the state contract awarded to Wade Ford. Item E, approval to use council chambers for findings for its HOA meeting Wednesday, April the 18th, 2018, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Do you hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve six zero. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Your Honor. No report this evening. I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Uh, Your Honor, no report this evening.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
Um, yes, Your Honor, I would like to, um, say, I have actually been on the city council now for two months, um, one day, one hour, and 23 minutes. I'm excited about that. And with saying that, on March the 3rd, I am going to host my very first town hall at the library in the, um, lower conference, um, hall room, and I would like to invite my Ward Three residents, as well as my Smyrna residents, to join me with any questions and, um, whatnot that you may have. And with that, I yield. March the 3rd, 10 a.m. to 12 p.m.
Mr. Corky Welch.
But who's counting? Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out this past Saturday to the North Cooper Lake Park. We had a really good crowd come out for the ribbon cutting of the park and the Arbor Day celebration. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
We also had a good turnout at Vicry Hardware for the unveiling of the new City of Smyrna mural. Thank you, Corky. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, at this time, I would like to make an announcement for Mary Moore, um, the director of the Smyrna Library, and, um, and she said that being, that it's President's Day, it's appropriate to publicize the library's upcoming First Sunday lecture. This will take place on Sunday, March 4th. Gwen Kohler from Roswell's Bullock Call will talk about Martha Bullock and Theodore Roosevelt Senior, Teddy Roosevelt's parents. Ms. Kohler has written three books about Midi and Theo's romance and their family history. She will use Midi and Theo's letters to give us a peek into their daily life. The lecture is at 3:00 p.m. in the library meeting room, and that will be on Sunday, March 4th. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Uh, Mr. Ron Fennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my report consists of just an advertisement for our next meeting, which is March the 5th, uh, the Finance Administration Committee at four o'clock, uh, in this building. Uh, we'll just, uh, provide a progress report of the finance efforts of the city. I also want to note that there will be an upcoming conversation through a town hall meeting by the elected state, uh, rep and state senator for our area, uh, the former member of this body, um, Terry Nulowitz is hosting with Senator Jen Jordan in the community center. That date is the 29th, I believe it is. Anyway, we'll make sure, um, somebody else, was it Monday the 26th? Monday the 26th, I believe that's at 6:30 or 7:00. It's in the evening at the community center. It should be posted on all the public forums. I'd urge everybody to get involved in that conversation. I think it's important. And I congratulate Ms. Blackburn for holding her first town hall meeting. It's, uh, it's always fun to get out there and hear what people are saying. It's really important. I, I applaud you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I yield.
Ms. Jones, anything else? Mr. Cockham. Ms. Corium.
Please. I'd like to introduce my, um, a new employee. Ms. Lisa Machoa has, uh, accepted our offer to become the deputy city clerk for the city. She started on Monday, and I'd just like to welcome her.
Thank you.
Um, just want to just, uh, thank Ms. Blackburn for all her hard work in, um, tonight's zoning. I appreciate your efforts to compromise issues and get the best that we could get as an effort to zone that property. I want to remind this council that if that property was annexed into the city, had it not been annexed in the city, then you would have gotten the zoning anyway, in the county, so, um, but I appreciate your efforts. Um, we do not have a show cause hearing. We got three people signed up for citizens' input. Alec Bakri, 3459, Sean E. Trail comments.
My first comment tonight is the article that was in a recent Brightside on, uh, the Reed House. And again, the title of historic is very misleading. The Historical Society or no other association has referred to it as historic, except certain people in the city. And I just wanted to comment that, uh, that word historic is misused other than being a hundred years old. That's it. The second point, it stated that the renovations at the Reed House was 1.5. That's incorrect. It's 1.9. So when you add 1.9 to the purchase, 1.8 and a quarter million for the park lot, we're up near $4 million for that property. When you put 1.9 million in the renovations, that takes away from the character of the house. It's totally changed. And, uh, I don't think there's anyone in front of me that can guarantee we're ever gonna get our principal back in this purchase. And again, the citizens had no say in the purchase of it. And thirdly, Mayor, you mentioned that purchasing the Reed House was, uh, part of the big picture. Well, we all seem to be lost on what the big picture is. I hope in the near future you can enlighten us on what the big picture is in Smyrna. Since, uh, the taxpayers paid for that, uh, property, and I'm one of them, maybe you could put out some applications. I'd like to apply to maybe move into one of the rooms over there. My second comment is this, Wendy Hill. For $42 million, I've asked, and many people do not know what's going on over there, for $42 million, we should have had a city town hall meeting, let alone a referendum. The taxpayers deserve to have a say in how their money's being spent and have questions answered. This has been totally denied. And between the Hickory Lakes, Smyrna Commons, Reed House, Concord Road, and now Wendy Hill with no say, and you're knocking down properties already, and I understand you still haven't got together on what the final design is, that's the cart before the horse. But at $42 million, this is the largest purchase-ish, uh, project in the city's history, and we've had no input. This is totally unacceptable, and I find it a blatant example of closed government. Thank you.
Tricia Burns, 4218, looks like Cheltenham Lane, um, Smyrna 3008. three double oh eight two, DACA is her topic.
My name is Pat Burns. Smyrna's been my home for over thirty years. It's been a city that has embarrassed me and dumbfounded me at times. However, Smyrna now brings me hope, and it gives me the courage to speak. The Vision Plan, if you are serious about it, demonstrates endless possibilities of welcoming the stranger. Our Campbell High School students, in, in our Campbell High School, there is a student population of about forty percent Hispanic. However, it includes students and graduates of all nationalities from countless backgrounds who speak many languages. This multinational student population is educated right here. They graduate, they get jobs, they are residents, they are taxpayers, they are our dreamers. Let me paraphrase Smyrna's vision statement. Smyrna will emerge as a regional destination for its diversity of distinct and welcoming neighborhoods. Using Smyrna's Vision Plan as a guide, it's time for the city council to boldly and bravely compose and publish a statement supporting DACA recipients. Let Smyrna be a place for dreams. Let Smyrna be a place for dreams in color. Let Smyrna be a place for dreamers and DACA. Thank you.
Kat Kaye Collavers, twenty-nine twenty-eight, thirty-nine twenty-seven, Plumcr- I'm still gonna call her name out. Plumcrest Road, Smyrna, Georgia. She here. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. That's all the folks that have signed up for citizens input. I declare this meeting adjourned at eight-thirty-three.